Call to order, the meeting of the Cascade Township Planning Commission for Monday, July 11th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Start by recording the attendance, all are present, going to Article 2, the Pledge Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
Evening, everybody.
Evening.
Moving on to Article 3, can I get an approval for the current agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Okay, motion made and supported, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, moving on. Can I get Article 4, does anybody, any member wish to disclose a conflict of interest? Believe we only have one item, right Brian?
Mm-hmm.
Tonight, so, okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Article 5. You're in approval for the agenda.
Add one correction.
Okay.
Article 9.
The minutes.
Discussion.
I said minute, I said minute.
You said agenda.
Thank you, sir, like to prove the minutes of the June 22nd, or June 6th, 2022 meeting.
That one, on Article 9, discussion of airport, just missing an A, an area, I don't recall if that was a typo on the agenda. We can correct that.
I hear any other corrections or changes?
Just having the caption of Article 9 you were looking at?
It was the title of Article 9, discussion of airport areas, just missing.
Got it. One other, and I wasn't there, but one other typo in, under Article 10. Fourth line. And hopeful to formalize, it should be, and hope to formalize, I assume.
Any objection?
No.
Hearing none. Okay. Any other corrections, additions? Say that Member Rappin made the motion, do I hear support? More support from Member Corstitch, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we'll move forward. Article 6, we will accept, will we accept the minutes of the composting use subcommittee meetings, did we get those?
There should all be in your pack.
Did everybody have a chance to review them?
Yes.
Clearly, I did not. Okay. Any concerns or questions?
I would make a motion to approve them.
Second, to accept them.
Accept them.
Made by Member Rissy, supported by Member Rappin, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we'll be on. Article 7, acknowledge visitors or those wishing to speak. We have a public hearing slated for the recommendation to amend the zoning, so I think you're here for that, so certainly willing to speak then, do we have anybody on the Zoom meeting? Okay, we will move on, acknowledging that there are no visitors wishing to speak, Article 8, case number 22-3719, Cascade Township.
Just a quick update on this, so attached in your package is a draft of the possible amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding vermiculture composting that was developed by the Planning Commission composting use subcommittee, so this was brought to you at the June 6th meeting, and we then we just scheduled the required public hearing for the meeting tonight, so there have been two changes made to the draft amendment since that June 6th meeting, and that was based off the discussion that was held regarding whether wood chip should be considered composting intakes and if negative aeration needed to be required as a design standard. So to address those comments, a line has been added to the definition of composting intakes to clarify that they do not include inventory slash bulk items, and then special design standard number 10 was revised so that a negative aeration system is not solely required for order mitigation. So those two sections should be reviewed to confirm that they meet your expectations. Then one additional item is brought up by Wormies regarding their desire to have an accessory soil blending operation. Essentially, they would take finished compost and mix it with inputs such as topsoil or peat moss to create different soil blends, such as a gardening soil or potting soil, so it'd be helpful to discuss if you believe that the materials used in that operation such as the peat moss and soil blends should be counted towards the total allowed input output of composting materials, or if they should be treated as accessory to the composting use with the materials treated similarly to the inventory bulk items, which should not be included in some of those restrictions in the amount of materials on site. So after discussing those, the planning commissioners requested to review the draft ordinance amendments and provide a recommendation to the township board. At this time, staff are recommending that you pass on a favorable recommendation that would allow composting as a special use. This was the township board would then hold a final public hearing on this matter.
We want to read into the record, the email that you got from Ada Township.
Yeah, I can do that when we open the public hearing, I can read it in.
Thank you.
So I have a question for Brian, I think it was last meeting, maybe two meetings before, did they get special approval to feed their worms?
They did, yep, they're allowed to bring in certain amounts and letting us know ahead of time.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, no other questions for Brian, yes, Member Rissy?
And I hate to bring this up now, but
Do you?
You know, it just I feel like I've, I got my face, but on the May 12th, subcommittee meeting minutes, under Article 8, it says, for example, not exceeding 3,000 cubic yards annually for a 20,000 acre parcel. And I'm pretty sure it's not supposed to say 20,000 acre. Does anybody recall what that number should be?
Well, it says 20 acres right here in number eight.
So the ordinance is accurate, the minutes.
The minutes, it's wrong, that's what I was thinking, so I was just thinking in lines of what you were just talking about, and that made me reflect back to the minutes, and so anyhow, we might want to make a motion to address that.
To correct the minutes?
To correct the minutes.
Why don't we do that really quickly?
Can we technically do that if we just move to accept them, not to approve them?
To accept them.
We accepted them as they were, not, I mean, we can, I think we can adjust them as subcommittee members.
Well, the thing is, I don't think the subcommittee has or did, I guess we did meet one, I don't know that we've approved those minutes.
Sure, we can still change it before I post.
I just wanted to bring that.
Because I don't want somebody to look that up later and say, hey.
No, that's reasonable.
But I don't think it changes the direction we're going right now.
Ultimately, we'll approve or not approve the zoning as it's written, which is not, which would replace the minutes anyway, so. Okay, any other questions for Brian? Hearing none, thank you. I hear a motion to go into public hearing.
And move to open public hearing.
Rappin, supportive of Member Dearing, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, hearing none, we will go to public hearing. We're in public hearing, if anybody in the public would like to come forward to make any comment, you're welcome to. Going once.
Is Brian gonna read?
He'd do that after the, are you gonna do that during, or I thought he was gonna do it after?
I can do it during, see if we have any other comment.
We also have a couple of emails of support to put into the public record if we wanted to, so, but the Ada 1 is, I think, more specific.
Yeah, and he also has specifically asked for it to be read in the public record too, so, yep, yeah, I'll speak to that, so as part of the zoning ordinance amendment, the zoning ordinance requires that we send it, the amendment, to neighboring municipalities, and so Ada Township did get back to us, so we got a comment from John Sed, who is the Director of Planning for Ada Township. He provided three comments on the proposed amendment, so I'll read those into the record. First is that the specific location of a composting facility and the location on Whitneyville Road, south of 52nd Street, would not appear to raise any concerns for Ada Township due to its distance from our community. However, the planned allowance of such facilities in the ARC District raises some concerns even when allowed as a special use. Second comment, if such uses were proposed in ARC areas close to Ada Township residential areas, concerns will arise regarding potential orders, truck traffic, and similar effects. This is all exacerbated by the potential transition of operations into larger scale business activities than approved by the township without township knowledge. And then third and final comment, it is not perceived that such a use would be consistent with the legislative intent of the ARC District as identified in Section 702 of the Cascade Township zoning ordinance. It tend, the intent appears to clearly identify the areas in these districts for agriculture, open space, and low density residential uses. A commercial composting facility would appear to be inconsistent with this intent and these uses. I think, Chris, as you noted, we did receive two emails this afternoon of support from residents on Shadlow Trail.
Either of them requested they be read into the records, so I think we can just note that there were two emails in support from two different residents.
I make a motion, we close public hearing.
Motion made by Member Rissy, supportive by Member Rappin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, move forward. Do we have any discussion, does anybody have any thoughts about Ada? But go ahead, Member Rissy, and then.
I was just wondering, Brian, do we have a his reference to Section 702, the description of use in that area, did, did you talk to Leslie at all regarding his comment?
I had not.
Or interpretation of?
I didn't talk to Leslie, I looked into the Chapter 7, that section, and some of the language in there is that, you know, that section is further intended of this district to conserve large tracts of land suitable for agriculture and other specialized rural uses and promote harmony between these uses and residences, and so it has that language of specialized rural uses, and in planning commission and subcommittee discussion, I think we kind of used, viewed this as a rural use similar to maybe a nursery or greenhouse, but with potential for more, potential harm to neighbors, and that's why we came up with that long list of standards that would have to be met. So that was my review of that.
Trust in order.
I just have a problem with commercial operation in the agricultural district, especially on such a small parcel with residential properties on both sides of this. I'm just not seeing that this is the right place or size of parcel for this to operate. I've seen commercial.
This discussion, I think that something we need to keep into mind that this is special use. We're putting this in for people to be able to apply for special use, so we would look at every individual business that came to us and decide, and it would go to the board as well as that, correct, Brian? So we not only have to, each individual business would have to be approved here and at the board level, which I think is important to note that this isn't a blanket statement saying, oh, you meet these, this criteria, you can have a composting business in Cascade Township in the agriculture district. That's not what this is saying, this is just kind of giving some parameters to it, the best that we could do based on the knowledge we have at this time, knowing that each individual business would have to be presented to the planning commission and to the board and take into each individual business its location, its neighbors. I'm assuming, Brian, that each individual business would have a public hearing based on each location, so each neighbors around that place would be able to come and, and speak. And I, I think that's what's important to me to keep in mind with this, is these are just some basic parameters that we put into place for people to apply for a special use, we're not approving anybody.
Well said.
Any other comments or discussion?
About this in general, or about the Ada?
I, anything, anything you'd like to talk about as it relates to compost?
Okay, so number five, 9:00 PM seems pretty late to me. You know, I know if my neighbor's out mowing lawn at nine o'clock, I'm, we're gonna be walking over to him.
Yeah, they have till 10:00, I mean, according to the noise used in Cascade Township, and that's where we felt, again, that we were looking at it based on, okay, the ordinance within the township for noise and things like that is till 10:00.
Does that include commercial?
Commercial is 10, and residential is actually not till 11:00.
11, so technically, they would have till 11:00.
This would be, this would be a commercial, so we would say 10:00, and then.
Wow, but can you say that if it's not commercially zoned?
Yep, we'd use the use, use for it, it's a commercial use.
Then what about agriculture?
Be careful.
Agriculture. I don't know that I agree with that. Well, we'll just agree to disagree.
Yeah, this would limit it to the 9:00 PM, right there in the special design standards.
Okay.
Member Roland, are you saying that you'd like to see it earlier than that?
I'd like to see it, yeah, like 8:00 PM, you know, I mean, I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's a business.
Now, we had that discussion as well, and I'll be honest with you, that was what, one of my concerns was seven or eight o'clock, just thinking if you live next door and have kids, you were trying to put to bed, and I think our compromise at that meeting was nine o'clock because of the general cutoff is 10 o'clock, so we're already limiting them by an hour.
Okay.
That's just how the, how, how our discussion went.
We're trying to be more conscious of the noise than the general ordinance.
Okay.
Should, by its part.
Is there anything in here that's, and I'm sorry, because I read it, but lots happened when I read it, but is there anything that says Monday through Friday? No weekends, or is this, you know, Monday through Sunday, they can at 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Sunday?
It is not day specific, but based on, I don't know, my, my opinion would be, I would not want to make a day specific.
Well, see, my opinion would be maybe Monday through Friday is 7:00 to 9:00, and, you know, Saturday and Sunday is, you know, 10:00 to 6:00, you know, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I don't live next to it, and I don't know how much noise is gonna be there, but I'll be honest, I would be rather upset if I had to deal with noise every day from 7:00 to 9:00.
Maybe, yeah, of course.
Member Roland, I, I would consider this item, that let's say Joe's worm farm comes in and puts in an application, and they want to produce, take deliveries or have equipment moving piles around and stuff, okay? If they came, they have to come to us at an annual review, and if they come in an annual review, and there's a person in the audience that says, hey, planning commission, they're running a Bobcat out there at nine o'clock every night, and it's a problem. I believe it's within the planning commission's ability to be able to, to amend as part of the special use, those hours, am I incorrect, Brian? Or is that something if we are to, because they have to come in for a review to continue operation? Are we able to work that out with them at that time, if it's a problem, or is that not?
It might be difficult if they're meeting the parameters, you know, if they're meeting that 7:00 to 9:00.
We've granted the special use at that point, I don't know that you can modify.
I don't know if we could, I don't know if we could change it if they're meeting their given parameters.
So we would have to, that would have to happen ahead of time, we'd have to say, now you only get eight o'clock as part of your special use.
I would think so.
Something in here that says that, you know, if noise is a concern from neighbors, then we reserve the right to amend it, change the time.
That could.
My only point is, I was in the same boat as you were during the subcommittee. So I will say that it was brought up, and I think the big thing for me that was some pushback towards me that made sense was, if you look at the setbacks, the birmingham, the the trees, the, the different screening that they need to have, that's where the, some of the pushback that I felt like I had received really kind of satisfied that thought of me, because I was trying to look at it in the mind of having a three-year-old child or something that hears these noises and wants to see the big equipment running, and you're trying to put your kid to bed at night, and you have to deal with this every night. And I think when we really talked about the screening and the setbacks from the
But, but I'm, I'm impressed with, with the thoughtfulness and the level to which they dug, they dug, got down into the weeds on this and tried to work on all these issues. I guess to that extent, I'm deferring to Wendy and the, and the subcommittee for the, with respect to the work that they've done and the conclusions they've reached.
Hey, we discussed it in great detail, I mean, we, we, and Wendy's right, on this particular item, we went back and forth and back and forth. And that's what I was gonna say, is what would you say is the right time?
Wait, hang on, I want to give you one more thing before you say that.
Yeah.
Knowing that you can have a neighbor that is either running, if you live in agriculture, you could have a neighbor that is running landscaping company or a nursery next door to you.
Or even a hobby farmer.
Yeah, they can run till 10:00, or a neighbor that's running a hobby farm, which is not commercial, that can be running these things till 11:00 at night, knowing that, what could we have, what would you want different?
Without setbacks.
Yeah, without setbacks, I mean, they can be running right next to you at any.
I mean, I would, I, you know, and I, I didn't dig into it as deep as you guys have, yeah, I agree with Joe that you guys did a great job, so thank you for all the work and effort, my gut would tell me eight to eight, Monday through Friday, right? And then Saturday and Sunday, you know, 10:00 to 6:00, or something like that, right? I mean, that gives you 12 hours, Monday through Friday, and then what another eight hours on Saturday and Sunday, I mean, and all I'm saying is, you know, I'm sure Wormies is gonna be awesome, right? But what happened, it's precedent, right? The next person that comes in here, well, you guys gave Wormies this, so this is what I want, and, you know, I listen, my wife and I are trying to sit on our back deck, and our neighbor starts mowing his lawn at six o'clock at night, when he had all day to do it, I mean, I mean, that aggravates me, I can't imagine having, but, but I don't know, have, have the neighbors complained or made any comments about Wormies going in next to them?
Well, that's how this all started originally, it wasn't completely, I haven't heard anything new recently. And again, right, when they apply for a special use permit, well, again, you notice neighbors, and that may be one place where it can be addressed is we can apply conditions to any special use approval, so maybe for some reason we get a lot of neighbor complaints or attending the meeting or worried, I guess, about it, you know, maybe we give some of that restricts hours on Sunday, do that specific application or something like that. So those conditions could give us a little wiggle room possibly.
Go ahead, Member Rissy.
I, we're gonna take this a little different direction here, change the subject a minute, if you're okay with that.
Sure.
Brian, did you have any concerns with the wording of the letter from Ada with regard to, what was your thought on the special use being, I guess, you could, I forget his exact wording, but growing into things that are outside of what we're willing to accept. I interpreted it as though he does not feel we will have a good handle on what's happening on said approved composting operation, and that it may grow into something outside of what was part of the approval. Do you feel satisfied that we have a strong enough
Yeah.
wording here to, to, you know, if, if we are made aware of, you know, all of a sudden they're growing corn and harvesting it or something, and that's not, you know, not part of the operation.
Yeah, I, I think we have a few places that address that, and not to say that is, I think is a concern for us too, right? It's something we'll need to stay on top of and how it affects residents, so I think I share those same concerns, but with that annual review was one place where we can track that, obviously, and we can, right, we can request them to come back at any time if we start getting neighbor complaints, and then there's some easier things like the site plan they have to keep to that operational area, so only that specific part of the property, so that's an easier way to track if they're expanding or not. The operational area can only be 30% of the property, so all of a sudden, if they have a new pile somewhere, a new building somewhere that's not in that operational area, then that's obviously going against what was approved by the special use permit.
Are you, are you aware of any other situations that would have, that would cause Ada to have that concern?
You mean, potential?
Yeah.
I'm sure just, you know, smell and truck traffic and noise and things like that, kind of the general ones that, you know, all of us had concerns with too, going into it.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, is I, I read the letter email from him. A very polite, nice way to say how we all felt when we first heard about this. You know, without knowing all of the depth and everything that came in, that's how I read the letter from Ada, it's like, it's fine, don't get it near me, but
Right, well, I heard that.
But without knowing really the depth of what it means, that's how I read it.
When I heard that, though, I thought the concerns raised in the email were nothing, that we wouldn't have concerns of our own neighbors who had raised the same concerns, and we'd have to take that into consideration with each unique approval.
And that's, that's the thing, and I feel like with the annual review, anything that got out of hand, I felt like we do have that addressed currently.
Yeah.
You know, some of his concerns were about if it grows out of control, or what are you gonna do about this? And I feel like with an annual review, or as Brian said, if you get any complaints, we can call them back to come. I feel like that is a way to kind of keep them under control.
So the thought is, I'm using hypothetical here, the thought is, if we get complaints from the neighbors on their annual review, you can say, listen, we're, we're cutting your hours back.
Yes, or even before.
And can we do that?
That's where he's saying we might not be able to.
We need to modify.
For their annual review, if we have complaints, or even if we don't, if one of us drive out to a place and say, oh, this doesn't look right, this doesn't look like what we agreed to, we can call them back at any point.
So here's, here's, here begs another question, right? If we may or may not, we haven't decided, right, we haven't figured that out, but if we may or may not be able to modify the hours, what else in here, well, we may or may not be able to modify on this annual review?
So I'd say the point of the annual review was just to confirm that they're doing what was approved with the initial special use permit, so if they're meeting everything that was approved, then that's the idea, I mean, same with a greenhouse or a nursery, if we got a complaint from a nursery running trucks at 10:00 PM, well, they're allowed to do that, so we wouldn't necessarily be able to restrict them from doing what they're permitted to do, but as part of the initial review, if that's a concern that comes up, or neighbors are worried, you know, we can maybe have a condition of approval that says, you know, at the annual review, if there's an issue, maybe we'll, I think that's be some condition of approval with the original, because that's what we're, that's what we're reviewing, is if they're meeting that, whatever that initial approval was.
Well, it just seems like we're, we're not giving ourselves an easy way to modify this for the good or the better. You know, maybe, hey, Wormies is great, we want to go from 3,000 to 4,000, you know?
But I think for perspective, the two things for me are, I mean, A, this, I know we have Wormies as an example, but this ordinance is entirely separate from Wormies, so I think we keep co-mingling them, and I don't think we should do that. And then the other point is, I, for the parcel slides we're talking about, it seems too restrictive to compare it, like if it's our neighbor, we've got two, 200-foot lots, and somebody's mowing their grass at 10:00 o'clock, that seems more of an issue than somebody who's on a 10-acre parcel, doing it in the middle of a 10-acre parcel.
A 30% of that 10 years.
Right, so I, for me, and I voice this on the subcommittee, I didn't want to be more restrictive in this use than the hobby farmer, than any other, any other average neighbor for what they could do.
Member Rissy?
I also would like to add that the ordinance is the guideline, right? And we have to be within that guideline, they have to operate within that guideline. But when someone comes in front of the planning commission, and we go to approve a special use for them, if they're in, and let's say they're in an area where they're proposing to do this, that's heavily surrounded by residents, it's, we have, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but we have the ability to say in that particular special use that, you know, nine o'clock's a bit late for that area, we want to see you wrap things up by seven. And at the time that we issue it, we can, I mean, we have the ability to set those parameters when we issue a special use permit. We just, the, the ordinance is our, is essentially, hey, this is what we're putting out there as what we think is, is acceptable in this area, but we can fine tune it a little bit if it's in an area that's, that is maybe more sensitive, am I, am I correct in that?
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay, so, so obviously Wormies, and this is separate, I'm using Wormies as the example since that's what we're talking about, but here's my concern is we're putting guidelines. we're putting guidelines in that appear to me to be very difficult to modify and we don't know what's gonna happen.
We haven't approved anything. Could I make a suggestion? On number seven, could we add the following verbiage? The planning commission may modify or edit the special use permit at its discretion. Like.
I also want to note out too, which it's not in front of us right now, and Brian, you can maybe help paraphrase better than I can. But I do believe this guy from the state of Michigan pretty much said, these ordinance are great if you don't want anybody to do this in your township. He's saying they're so restrictive that it would be difficult to follow these. So I do want to point that out too, Brian. I mean, I'm paraphrasing 100%, that is, but he did make.
It was a good paraphrase.
Well, and, you know, the chair brought up, that's all, the chair brought it up, like, if we can just put something in here that we as a group can modify as necessary for the good or the, I mean, hey, you're doing great, we can expand it, right? But we, we just, we, we have no ease, we now have an easy ability to modify, yeah, if needed, I think that.
Jump in the voice from Zoom. This is Laura Genovich from Foster Swift. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I would be cautious about having standards in the ordinance and then saying the planning commission can just change those. Not that it wouldn't be in a thoughtful way, but say, all right, we're going to allow you to operate till 9:00 PM, but at the annual review, we can change that. There's a concern there that, that, at that point, there's sort of a vested property interest in operating. And as Brian pointed out, operating in compliance with the ordinance. So there could be a risk of a challenge to that. I think in terms of hours, you have a couple of options. One is to put the hours in the ordinance and perhaps have different hours depending on which district you're talking about. Or even which parts of districts, if you know there's an area where you might want different hours where this, where there's a zoning district in effect, then you could perhaps carve that out. Or perhaps put that the hours will be a condition of the special use permit and will be determined at that time. You still want to make sure you're being very fair and equitable in how you apply that. So Wormies doesn't get, you know, till 10:00 PM and then the next person gets till 5:00 PM without some, you know, very justifiable reason.
I appreciate that, but if I could come, you know, go a little bit on a different angle. Oftentimes, our new residential areas end up what used to be agricultural areas. And I think that's where Member Rollins is going is, if today is nine o'clock's fine, right? All you can see is farm fields as far as the eye can see. Five years from now, there's a ton of subs that we have approved that are in that area. And, and that's when we'd want to make that change. And I think, again, I'll defer to the attorney, but it, if we're upfront about that and that we can change it, they've, they've accepted that when they, they took the special use. Am I incorrect on that? If the zoning is specific that says it can be changed.
But on the flip side of that, my concern is they bought a property next to an existing operation. And sure, that operation shouldn't be penalized because somebody moved in after them.
Because I've brought that up multiple times and that's what, and it makes sense. Like if I'm gonna purchase this land next to this worm farm, I already know what's going on there. That it would be unfair if I didn't have that there and then a new one came in, then maybe I could be upset about it. But if you're purchasing next to an existing operation, I think it's hard to go back then to the existing operation and say, sorry about your luck, now the neighbors don't like you because there's a new subdivision next door, we have to limit your hours.
Yeah, I mean, it's no different if you approved a coffee shop and, so you can start selling coffee at 5:00 AM.
Back to the landscaping business, that can happen there. I mean, you know, it'd be the same thing.
That's fair, a good point. Trusty Nordhook.
I just think the, the best way to do this is to keep commercial operations and commercial zoning. We don't have to worry about residential properties and orders and noise and hours of operation. This is a commercial operation, we're trying to wedge it in under agriculture. And I don't feel this is the right way to go. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or considerations?
Should we take the hours out completely and just say, to be determined? I mean, it's a special use permit, it's a case by case, why even put the hours in there to be determined via the, the permit?
I think that, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, not saying I agree or disagree. I think it's hard though, because if I am, I've purchased some land with the idea that I could possibly get a special use for this and I've looked at the rules and the special use, and then I come in here and you decide you can operate from 10:00 to noon. You know, I mean, I think that we could then potentially limit them too much where I don't, I think it's giving a false sense of, then we shouldn't even do this, you know what I mean? Like, if that's gonna be the case.
I, I agree with that. I think that you have to be careful with how much you expect the plan, how many blanks you expect the planning commission to fill in later. And I guess my concern with that is that in 15 years from now, most likely none of us will be sitting up here. And no one, whoever's sitting here will have, won't have the luxury of looking at all of the information we looked at to determine those hours. And I, I can see somebody saying, like, say Brian's here, he's standing up there, well, you know, I recommend we go with the, with the same, we have it mimic the sound or the noise ordinance in the township. Because I, I think we've done things in the past that that's exactly what we did. Oh, that sounds like a marvelous plan. Whereas this is more restrictive than that would be. So I think setting a limit here now is better than leaving it open ended. Because I think leaving it open ended sounds great because we're all engaged in this conversation. But I think if you're actually approving something down the road, when it's not on our mind, comes in front of us, I think it would get approved at, at a much looser regulation.
What if you said something like not to exceed 7:00 AM through 9:00 PM? And that gives us, would that give us leeway to change it? Because it says not to exceed that, and that would imply that we can adjust it. I'm just, I mean, I get it, and I, you know, I just, I'm trying to put myself in the neighbors, right? And, hey, I'm 25 years old, I live out on the farm, everything's great, but guess what? Now I'm 30, I'm married and I've got a baby, and now there's farm equipment going on at nine o'clock at night and the baby's trying to go to bed.
Farm equipment's allowed there until 11:00.
So, I know, but we have an opportunity to change that, right?
No, 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 no.
With this, it.
Just agriculture zoning as well, I mean, and that's the thing we gotta remember, it's not in residential, it's out.
Right now, you can run a combine over there, you could leave it idling and go to Starbucks and get a coffee and come back. That's, that's a lot until 11:00 PM. I don't know, Starbucks is open that late, but it could happen.
And the other thing too, I think, too, just another comment that we talked about was, we talked about trying to limit this the best we could to make sure it fits within the agricultural zoning versus once it gets to a certain point, which is something we talked long and hard when they were here previously, was moving it to an industrial use at a certain point. We don't want them to be, you know, having mass production in a pole barn or bagging up all of the stuff, fertilizer and different things to ship out and the UPS trucks coming and going at night. We talked long and hard about that as well. That it's very hard to like, and we talked a long time about the agricultural zoning with the attorneys about what should really usage and what the, I guess, theory behind that is to try to make sure this stays within the spirit of agricultural zoning versus industrial. And I think we got to a point where we have made things where, okay, if it gets to a certain point, pieces of the operation are gonna have to move to industrial because we don't want that in our agricultural zoning either. We really looked at every, and again, we're open to listening and hearing and we can change this however anybody wants. But we did take those things into consideration and tried to fit this the best we could into what would fit into an agricultural zoning versus when it was gonna have to move out and go to industrial. Because we don't want shipping and all of these things going on there either.
Right. We, we don't, and the, the one thing that I would just add to that is that the majority of the operation there is done with the worms and they're pretty quiet. I haven't heard worms make a lot of noise.
And that is an agriculture thing. That's not something really that should be doing in an industrial to me.
So this is, this number five, if you will, is really specific more or less to deliveries, shipping, receiving a bobcat running through to move dirt around, that type of stuff, which is not happening every day, all the time. And, and, you know, and I would not think that it is every day, all the time.
Not with the small amount of product that they're allowed to have on site either. You know, I mean, when you look at all of the pieces of it, it would, unless they decided, I'm going to start running at eight o'clock at night to do this piece of it, there's not many portions of the business that are that loud.
So my concern is, you know, you brought up, it's not fair for, for a company to buy and then us to open a subdivision. Okay, here's the thing, my concern is the neighbors that are there now, right? They're there. And now we're bringing in a business, right? And now it appears to me that there's no recourse if the neighbors complain about this, that, or other thing. Hold on, the company, hey, we're within the guidelines. Well, great, now we look at the neighbors and we say, I'm sorry, they're within guidelines. Now, if I were a neighbor, I'd be very upset because, listen, I was here first.
We're not bringing anybody in with this ordinance, we're opening the door to have the conversation of whether or not we could. So if this passes, this doesn't de facto mean that an operation opens up.
Okay, right, they have to come in front of us.
They still have to.
And go through the process.
Everybody has to apply. Wormies will have to apply any company that wants to do this. And what I had.
So at that point, we could still.
There's public hearing.
Right.
For each individual one here, and then there's also the board.
It's just allows us to have the conversation.
This just allows us to talk to them and to allow the neighbors to come in and to have that conversation.
And then I would ask you the same question I asked you earlier, and that is, what time do you think it should be?
And I said from eight to eight Monday through Friday. And from 10:00 to six Saturday and Sunday, I think that's probably a fair thing. Now, or the other thing is, you leave the hours empty and since it's a special use permit, we decide what the hours of operation are for the first year. And maybe they're a little restrictive and we see how things go. And if things go well, when they come back for the year review, we can potentially expand the hours if there's no complaint. I, I just think we don't have, if there's not an easy way for us to, you know, correct this if there's complaints.
So I'm gonna just speed this up a little bit, I, I hear your, does anybody else, just a quick show of hands, if you have concerns about the hours?
Who's ours?
About the hours as stated, hours as stated in the, in the proposed. No, I'm just trying.
No, I get it, I get it, yeah, I get it.
Okay, are there any other concerns, comments?
So let's talk about the special mixing area.
Sure.
I think that should be included in the 3,000. I don't think that that should get a special addition, that's part of the inventory.
Does anybody from the subcommittee wish to speak to that? Perhaps there was a reason you did that the way you did it.
I, I just have a clarification, because I, I don't, I'd have to figure out exactly where it is, but is that the one that has to be enclosed?
No. So this was the soil, so, yeah, that kind of accessory soil blending operation that again, came up a little bit later then. And whether that soil blend where they mix some of their compost with just, you know, kind of normal piles of soil, whether we include that in all of the materials restrictions here or the, you know, amount allowed on site or not? Or is that kind of treated as an accessory use? That's maybe not the same, that still have to meet setbacks in an operational area, but maybe not the size restrictions. So as this is written right now, composting intakes does not include inventory items, bulk materials used solely for landscaping purposes on site. So are we saying that as written, it would fall into inventory items? I would believe so, because soil's not either mentioned as a composting intake.
But if they're mis-mixing it with the soil, then that's inventory.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It'd be.
Yeah.
And Brian, when we are discussing a specific request, we could discuss that. And at that time, put a restriction on inventory items specific to the special use. I would think so. I think we could, when we get that special use application, we could review it then and specifically decide if that, how much would be allowed or if it should be included in that or not. My take on that was that it seems appropriate to leave it as defined and talk about the specifics of each use when it comes to the inventory, because the inventory of one operation may differ from the inventory of another operation.
Well, and I think, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I, I agree with member Rappin', and the thing I guess that, that stuck in my mind when we had this conversation in the subcommittee was, so they have a big pile of dirt there. Is that a big deal?
No.
I mean, because I, I look at housing developments in the area, right? And they put a mountain to topsoil and a mountain of sand, and it can be there for three or four years until they finish the project. So I think that was kind of along the lines of what we're thinking as well, like, what do we want to see, what don't we want to see? And, and, and so that's why we were thinking it was kind of more case by case basis.
And they limit the amount of output from the worms, which is what we felt like is going to ultimately. I think we talked about like calculations to try to figure out, like, okay, if they were doing that three to one mix, what's the maximum amount of dirt that they should have? And we just kind of went through it like, okay, we've limited the amount of output. In turn, that is going to ultimately, it should limit the amount of mixing material that they have there. And if those are questions we ask on an individual basis to say, what are you mixing with? And how much of that do you plan on doing, having on site? You can tell by the 3,000 cubic yards of output per year, how much they should be having there over time. You know, you should be able to do the math calculations and figure it out. And we talked about that and I think Scott put on his landscaping brain and started figuring out cubic yards. And then he was like, we're gonna be able to tell, we can figure it out over time.
So my concern is, you've got 3,000, and I'm just gonna use numbers, right? 3,000 intake, 3,000 of finished material output, right? Now you take that 3,000, mix it with the dirt, right? So now you got 6,000 or more, maybe 9,000, I don't know what the ratio would be, right? And now you've still got the 3,000 of intake, that's now probably the outtake, another 3,000. And, and now you've got, you know, 16,000 cubic yards of aisles, right? And now, I mean, it, it just.
And I think that goes into more of a finished product then, which I think then is gonna be something that's gonna have to look at by case by case. They have, because then realistically, you can figure it out if you have, if you do a three to one mix and you've got some knee thousand cubic yards, you have more than 3,000 output sitting on your site. I mean, you can really, you should be able.
Yeah, I don't care about the dirt, I care about, listen, once you, once it's mixed, that should go, that number should go toward that 3,000 of output. That, that's your output until it gets removed from the facility, you can't have any more.
Number nine, okay.
So Alan, are you saying you'd want that soils to be part of the output is kind of what you're?
Oh, yeah, I will, what I'm saying is, I.
I, I don't think it need, I think that we can still figure it in, because I think like, if it's a, let's say four to one and you have 9,000 square feet or three to one, 9,000 square feet of dirt, 3,000 square feet of
Cubic.
Cubic yards, sorry, of output. Once you mix it, you're gonna be able to know at the end how much that is. And they're gonna have to get rid of it, all of that, if they used all 3,000 feet of.
Well, that would be, that would be finished composted.
I was 27, one cubic foot bad.
Right.
How many summers are going on with?
Ask Scott, because he's our, our brain. Because I kept asking him, I want to see a visual, how big is this? How much, how many truckloads is this?
I did that math in the committee and I'm not sure if it made it into the minutes or not, we'd have to check there, but.
Bring in a semi-load of dirt every day with that. And that would be a discussion of the special use of the inventory item.
So they can have 3,000 of intake, 3,000 of, I'm sorry, what's the word? Output and another 4,500 of.
Well, it says that an operation may have a maximum of 4,500 cubic yards of compost, composting intake, finished or finished compost onsite at any one time.
Okay.
With no more than a thousand yards being composting intake. So they're limited.
Okay.
Right there, now.
I believe we have.
I'll let the chairman handle that. I, yes. Yes, go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Louis Chen, we're Wormies, 5745 Whitneyville Avenue, Southeast. So when we look at the intake, the 4,500, that gives volume reduction by 50%. So you end up with 2,700. So you don't end up with the same amount of input. So you don't end up with the same amount of input when you are composting, is a volume reduction.
So you bring in three thousand, by the time it's done to output, it's fifteen hundred. So you're saying, about, approximately.
So you have something to think about.
Thank you.
And we discussed this a great detail, not knowing what, because we talked about that, we just put the three thousand on both sides, but again, you couldn't have three thousand in the output because your input is limited.
Yeah, so I, eight, nine, I'm reading those over and over, and it just wasn't registering, like. And then the other question I have, sorry, is number ten, reasonable action, but what, what, what do you guys see as reasonable action?
We, I think we talked long apart about this as well, just, one, it's very difficult to put anything in here that could potentially, with technology changing constantly, that I think that if we put anything else in here to try to set requirements, it may limit in the future, something better. And so I think that we tried to keep it kind of broad, saying you have to have some kind of mitigation system in place, and that will come to the planning commission for review to decide whether or not that is working. Yeah. Whether it's something, you know.
We, we talked in, in detail about this with the, with the attorney, and she had some examples of, of ways to deal with that, if it became a problem, and that, and this wording was kind of how we, we decided it was the best way to move forward, based on that.
It was a way to say, some action must be taken without being prescriptive, and what action had to be taken, because otherwise, they may come up with something better than what our minimum requirement.
That word reason means a whole lot from a legal perspective, you know, the word reasonable specifically, so I'll let member Ring go talk to them if. We, we want that, we want the applicant to come in with ideas of how, and to research what the best way to deal with this is, at the time they make their application to us. And if we throw in there that we want to see a fan running, okay, well now all of a sudden, we've just given them a real easy, you know, opportunity of, of, you know, and they might not even need, they might, it might prevent them from even looking at what other options are available to mitigate odor.
So my question, I guess my thought was reasonable action, or, uh, must take reasonable action to mitigate the potential of odor, right? Well, I, I, I tried. I mean, I didn't, it didn't, didn't do it, but I.
We have the attorney on the line, would you kindly tell us the definition of reasonable? I think that will help.
Next sentence.
The next sentence, finish reading it, because I think that it does kind of clarify a little more, it really gives us the opportunity at any point in time, if there are orders for the neighbors, to say this is not enough. You need to do something more.
Right, so the way this is drafted, um, as was said, indicates, gives the township the ability to review what that reasonable option is as part of the special land use process, so, right, unreasonable is we're gonna spray some air fresheners, I mean, I don't mean to be absurd, but it has to be reasonable, this does allow for, uh, changing technology. We often see similar regulations in cannabis ordinances in communities that allow, um, grow operations and things like that, that there's gotta be odor mitigation, um, and filtration. The manner in which the applicant wants to accomplish that can reasonably be up to them, as long as they can come to you during the special land use process and say, here's the technology we're going to use, here's how it's been demonstrated to mitigate odor, um, in the industry elsewhere.
And I think the, the statement too about, um, non-machus orders or garbage affecting neighboring properties, also allows, kind of is open-ended, that at that yearly review or anytime throughout the year, if a neighbor complains of either of those things, restrictions can be put in place because it is specific in here, that if the neighbors are affected.
Right. Because at that point, they would not be meeting the conditions of the special use.
Okay.
Are you good with that, member Ellen?
Yeah.
That's the last one.
No, no, this is good, this is good, thank you, uh, for that, and your diligence. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Do I hear a motion? Love it, if it came from somebody from the subcommittee.
I would move to recommend, the, I'm trying to think of a word, this, I would move to recommend the amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Recommend the, the amendment, the zoning ordinance to allow commercial composting as a special use in the A, RCFP and Izone districts.
Correct.
Okay. I hear a motion by member Rappin', do I hear support?
Support.
Okay, I'm gonna say member Deering got that first, uh, for my member Deering. Brian, can you call the roll on this one? I think we're gonna have some, I know of one potentially, uh, who will vote against this, I want it on record.
Yep. Member Nordhook?
Yes.
Member Roland?
Yes.
Member Reese?
Yes.
Member Moxley?
Yes.
Member Nordike?
Yes.
Member Deering?
Yes.
Member Rappin'?
Yes.
Member Corstens?
Yes.
Member Angle?
Yes.
Surprised me. Okay.
I just want to say too, on behalf of the subcommittee, even though I'm not the chair of the subcommittee, that I, I appreciate you all supporting, just because I do think we, we truly did hash a lot out and fought at this from every angle, and tried to put ourselves in any neighbor's shoes to know, it will come in front of us and the board to be able to put some restrictions on if we did.
I thought we did a, a really, a really good job in trying to foresee what.
Constantly.
Right.
Everybody brought a different angle.
Absolutely. Brian and Leslie, the whole, yeah, the whole team. A big, big thank you to the subcommittee.
Thank, thank you for your hard work.
Yeah. I would ask, uh, Brian to keep us in the loop when this is gonna show up on, uh, trustee Nordhook's schedule, uh, on the board, and then if possible, if we could have somebody from the subcommittee.
Oh, boy.
Present at that board meeting, I'm not asking for a special presentation, but there will be a public hearing, and I think it would go a long way, um, if somebody from that subcommittee could get up, uh, in front of the, the township board, preferably the, uh, chairperson, um, to walk through that.
I don't mind going as well.
Yeah.
About doing that together.
Yeah.
Happy to people that can talk about two different angles from it.
I think that's really important, I think also, we have something that's somewhat unique, which is a regular check-in, that's part of this, I would make sure to highlight that, uh, I've mentioned it to a number of, of the trustees, um, and the supervisors, I've discussed it with them, because I think it's pretty unique, and I, I really like the direction we're going there, yes. I, I just wanted to point out that, that, uh, Planet Hill Brands and myself already met with the supervisor and gave her a little bit of rundown of what was coming, and, uh, at the subcommittee level, Wendy and I had talked about being at the board meeting to answer questions, so what you're asking is kind of already.
Excellent.
Set in motion.
Good, good, I should have assumed that that was the case, uh, but.
Never assume. Happens to be that we checked all the boxes on this one.
Excellent. Okay, moving to article nine, um, do we have any old business, any reports, uh, from our other subcommittees, or anything that they'd like to, to bring up? Yes?
We had discussed having a subcommittee to look at the zoning at the airport.
Yes.
And I wanted to see if those who wanted to be part of that were ready to get started with that, if, uh, we could maybe, I, I think we had talked about having them meetings at the same time that the worm subcommittee was, so I wanted to throw in a couple Thursday mornings a minute while we're out here and see if July twenty-one would be too soon to have one of those, and I didn't know about Brian's availability, and I think Leslie said she'd help out with that too. I don't know if that's.
I know Leslie is not available July twenty-first because she will be on vacation. We can likely have somebody else from our office, but.
Well, we might as well start with the same team that we're gonna finish with, so should we go to the twenty-eighth, or do you think it?
Yeah, yeah, she'll be back that week, so, um, I just know she's gone, she leaves tomorrow, and she's gone, I think, through the twenty-second, so the twenty-eighth, I don't have her calendar, but I know she's at least not on vacation.
I might check with Mike and Leslie too, and see if, yeah, Leslie is the one to stay on there with us.
And I can, I guess, the first meeting is probably gonna be more educational for us as members looking at the ordinance, so we might not actually need legal counsel the first one, I think, but, um, there's that, so maybe you and I can connect on dates, and then I'll email those that were interested.
What time do you meet? Uh, what do we meet before, seven thirty? Seven? Was it seven? AM, PM?
Some people don't get up quite.
Is there breakfast served? There's a six a.m.?
Depends how much Scott.
There you go.
We had donuts one time.
It's because he's working till ten o'clock at night.
No, he's up early too.
I just don't sleep.
Okay.
That.
That's adequate, I think.
Okay.
I would probably need a refresher on who wanted to be on that committee, so that I know who to email.
Uh, if you could raise your hand.
I was hoping you were gonna remind us.
Member Corset, member Moxley.
It'll be fun.
Retired.
Well, you didn't have to raise your hand, you know.
I had Corst, Corstens, Moxley, and Rappin', according to the minutes.
Okay.
Last meeting.
Understood. Anybody else that would like to come is more than welcome.
Excellent, and I, I think a report was finally submitted from another subcommittee thus, after our last meeting, is that accurate?
Yes.
Sure? Oh, yeah, I think I did.
Brian, when that's confirmed, we'll use another calendar.
This is heavy.
Yeah.
Did I just steal your thunder?
For as much, as much work. I did, I did, and you guys did a good job boiling that.
We won't have to read through the entire document.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, uh, thank you to the committee members who participated in this, I think we had a great committee, they were very, uh, open-minded and gave me, gave us a lot of good ideas, uh, basically, everybody at this end of the table with trustee Nordhook, uh, member Roland, uh, member Reese, and then member Rappin', the five of us. Also, uh, joining us on the committee were Brian, thank you Brian, for your participation, Ben Swayze, uh, and Madison, the new zoning director, she attended a couple of meetings also, and she, she was very open and willing to participate, and appreciate that. Uh, we are going to make our final recommendation to the Board of Trustees this Wednesday evening. I'm not sure what time it is, but I'm gonna be there at the, for the seven o'clock meeting. Uh, member Roland will be participating in that, it'll be the two of us presenting the information, uh, kind of going back and forth, uh, the items that he's most familiar with, he'll cover those I'm most familiar with, I will cover. And, uh, I think we can, uh, try to get through it in fifteen minutes, uh, that trustee Nordhook said, keep it brief, try to keep it to fifteen minutes, but all possible, don't get into any long diatribes here. Also want to thank, uh, Jessica Stein for all the time she spent putting these notebooks together, uh, she was great, I basically sent my, my, uh, documents to her, and she kind of did the final formatting and assembly of everything, and I recommended hardcover booklets like this, and even though it costs the township a little bit more for those, I felt that they would last longer doing it that way. I also ask that we submit, uh, these booklets to all of the trustees ahead of time. If they've been distributed, you've seen. Okay. Okay, well hopefully they've received those and had a chance to look at it, I think that will encourage more questions at the meeting when we make the presentation, rather than them just looking at it and trying to read through it during the meeting. So hopefully we'll get a good dialogue going, uh, and we can answer their questions. That's basically it.
Can.
Hey.
Go ahead. Perhaps, if it hasn't already happened, uh, Brian, or someone, maybe somebody should send the board members an email that there's a packet waiting for them in the mailbox here to pick up, so that they.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have a chance to review the information before the meeting.
Packet.
Yeah.
By the way, this looks good, this looks great.
Yeah. Well, well done. To all those involved, um, whatever. I think this is by far the most proactive, uh, planning commission in recent memory, and I remember Reese, you've been at it a little bit longer.
Yes.
Yeah, without a doubt, so thank you, everybody, um, and thank you for those who put this together under, uh, vice chairman Moxley's able leadership, so thank you. Excellent, um, do we have any other business, moving on to article ten? We have a meeting scheduled a week from today, do we have anything on the agenda?
We do, yep, we got a, that site plan, and then a, just a special use permit for accessory building.
Excellent. Exciting. All right. I'm gonna move on.
Not for composting.
What's that?
The S U P is not for composting.
Nope, it's a, yeah, just a accessory building, not composting yet.
I'll move on to article eleven and acknowledge any visitors or those who wish to speak. Yep. Again, for the record, if you could just state your name and address.
Chandler Michalski, fifty-seven forty-five Whitneyville.
And Louis Chen, fifty-seven forty-five Whitneyville Avenue with Wormies.
And we'd just like to say, uh, thank you very much for working with us and being pragmatic, and, uh, the subcommittee especially, and, uh, just thank you, we really, really appreciate everything that you guys have done to work with us, and, uh, I know that we can bring a lot of value to this township, absolutely.
The worms have been fat.
Yeah, no, same here, I appreciate the time you have put, uh, on learning about composting, I think it is pretty important that, you know, you all got involved in this, learn, and are actually now supporting, uh, I think it's a win, not only for the well-being of the township, uh, the neighbors, but you know, for a better way of wa- waste management, you know? If operation like us, small, can be replicated in, or the country, you know, it's, it's a lot better than having a bunch of landfills or massive composting operations, so yeah, I'm really looking forward to, to having a presence here, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Product seems much better than alternative as well.
I would recommend you guys go to the township board meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah. They didn't get to see your presentation that we did, but you had a lot of good information in that presentation, and we're very thankful for that, as well as the state guy that came, because that answered a lot of our questions and really helped us at the subcommittee level, we kept diving into your packet, made a big difference.
Yeah, I appreciate that you volunteered to come and represent and explain it, any questions I may have?
Yeah, and we really hope you guys were there as well, just to, to be able to let them see the real, you know, we can talk.
Right.
The idea in general, but I think to have you guys there, and I do think too, I know the original packet we had gotten when you first came here, there were some other supporters as well, which I think is really important, just to see it from other individuals from different parts of the process, people that, you know, give the recycling versus the people that receive the end product.
Yeah, this is all our community here.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Moving on to article twelve, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to get an ice cream cone, so with that, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Member Reese makes the motion, vice chair Moxley supports, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Night.